Was this a meeting we have every four years? That's how to leap here.
Yeah, let's see. We'll see what sticks.
Right. So if I abstain, then Troy votes?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Why are you going to abstain? Because I have a conflict. I'm conflicted. With that, my name.
I had that same thing, but.
I don't have.
I told him he doesn't have to, but he can't do it. That's all.
You just, you could just disclose it. That you live there.
Oh, yeah, I'll disclose it.
And then vote.
Then vote.
Disclose and vote.
I haven't figured out for sure what I'm doing.
Right now, we're good.
How good?
You doing?
Good.
Hold on.
That's a pretty cushy chair.
Yeah, they actually aren't bad, are they?
No. They're different from what they're expected.
Well, we used to. We used to have cushy, cushy chairs. But they get pretty dirty pretty quick.
Yeah, these are.
And we actually got these during the COVID. They're whole, they share. Yeah, they're not bad.
Can you hear us okay, Karina?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
I heard a door. Hey, we'd like to call this meeting to order for the Nibley City Planning and Commission for date of February 29th, 2024, here located at the Nibley City Hall. I think we only hold this every four years.
Right.
We're gonna leap here. Welcome, everybody. Glad you're in attendance. We'll go ahead with roll call this time. I'm Claire Shank.
Brett Swenson.
Nikenska.
Forever bow.
Karina Brown.
Okay. Also in attendance is Levi Roberts, which is the city planner, and also Taylor Kilpad, the Assistant City Recorder, and also Tom Dickinson, the city engineer. And so, but welcome, everybody. First thing on the agenda, I'd like to call for a general consensus for approval of the agenda in minutes from the last meeting on February 8th, 2028, 24. Looks like we have a general consensus. Okay. Let's go ahead and move to the first item on the agenda. Let's have Levi introduce that to us, please.
Yeah, I'll just give a little background of the project. The proponent is also here. Do we have any questions for him? So this, this property, it sits north of where the Logan Coach is on, on a nine point, about a 9.7 acre portion of the parcel. We talked about this, this piece of land before. It's been, been rezoned, conditionally rezoned. There's been a few different proposals on it, but, but what's being proposed tonight is, is a 32 lot subdivision. And this is, this is for the preliminary plat. One of those lots is intended to be for an assisted living center and the remaining 31 for a single family, 55 and older community. A little bit more on, on kind of the history of the rezone. So, you know, if you look at our zoning map now, it's, it's an industrial zone. But it was, it was rezoned commercial. It's approved for a commercial with the condition that the area first needs to be subdivided so that the zoning doesn't go into effect until, until that, that piece of property that, this 9.7 acre piece that we're talking about gets subdivided. So really, what, what we're talking about tonight is evaluate the property based upon this, this commercial zoning, these commercial zoning standards at the time they submitted that application, which, you know, some, some versions of, of the zoning ordinance have, have changed since that time. However, they are, they are vested under, under the code that was in the books at the time, and there wasn't at that time, any discussion of, of changes to it. So I'll, I'll talk more about kind of how that goes into play here, just so you understand that, that, you know, if you look up the code now, there are some things in there that, that would, you know, let, let itself say that it's not allowed, but it, but it did because it was, was allowed at that time of application. So this is the proposed, an image of the proposed preliminary plat. You see the layout of the streets there, the proposed area for this assisted living center is, is there on, on the northwest, west side property. And then the remaining piece is, is a single family home. Get into more detail on the project, but, but as you can see there, it, it connects to 800 West. We connect 800 West to the, to the west and then to the north, 660 West. In the Elkhorn subdivision there in the north. This is just an image of proposed preliminary landscape plan, you know, primarily just showing the street trees and then, and then landscaping around this living center. It's a preliminary plan, you know, it's subject to further review, but just to show that, you know, the intent will provide those, those trees and influence of the plan. So, a little bit about, a little bit more about the zoning. So, single family housing, this living facility, they were listed as conditional uses at the time of initial application. Currently, if you look in there now, a single family housing was actually removed, except in, in the town center area where if it's part of a mixed use project, however, at, at this time, it was allowed. So that's, that's, you know, how, how they should be considered. Assisted living facility was and is a conditional use and, and the commercial zone as well. And so, but what's being considered tonight is just the preliminary plat, so that there is, there is going to be more steps for final approval for this. If, if this is approved tonight, there's, there's still more steps for conditional use permit for both the single family homes and, and the assisted living facility, as well as site plan review for the assisted living center and, and a final, the final plat. So as far as lots, lot standards, lot widths and setbacks, the, the proposed preliminary plat does meet or exceed the minimum lot standards for lot widths and setbacks. And I go into more detail in the agenda item report, but because this is a commercial zone, the setbacks are, and, and lot standards are pretty limited. There's actually no minimum lot size within the commercial zone. There's, there's no minimum five yard setback. You know, they're, they're proposing five yard or five foot side yard setback. There's also no lot width requirement, but, but their, you know, their minimum lot width that they're showing is 60 feet. So, you know, some of those, some of those standards in, in some portions of the development are really are, that there is, there is no standard, right? So, and they see that, which does seem appropriate for, for the context of, of the development they're, they're proposing. There are some, though, setback standards, like because it's in a commercial zone, even if it's not a commercial use, because, because it's in a commercial zone, there is a standard for commercial zones, and if it's adjacent to a residential zone or dwelling, there's a minimum 30 foot setback, and then that increases by one foot for every foot in height that it's, that it's taller than that. You know, they're showing a 30 foot setback, which is sufficient so, so long as the, the height of those, those buildings is 30 feet or lower. But the setback would need to increase if, if, if that were to increase. We don't have, you know, we don't have the details right now of this living center. I mean, we've been told it, and we don't expect it to be greater than 30 feet, but we just, we, that is one of our conditions is, is that if, if it is, then, then that setback would need to be increased to, to be in accordance with, with Nibley City Code. The project does include two phases. So the first phase is proposed to be seven lots, so the assisted living facilities, lot as well as six of the single family lots, and then phase two would be 25 single family lots. Utility systems, you know, water sewers, stormwater, they have been reviewed, you know, as a preliminary review, they are subject to further review, it's site plan review and final plat to ensure proper flows are maintained. And, and, you know, Tom, if you go into more detail, if you have questions about specific things with, with the, with the utilities, with the connections, but, you know, they are, they're showing like for the water connecting both to a water line on 660 West and 800 West. And then, you know, providing sewer connecting into sewer line that all in 800 West there. They do, they do show a stormwater basin within the assisted living center. The, the lot on the assisted living centers have come apart of the open space there. The, there's also two canals, two parallel canals currently that run through this property that they're proposing to pipe. And one is a Nibley Black Smith Fork canal, the other is college irrigation, the larger canal you see in there is college irrigation, and they're proposing to pipe those canals. And, you know, reroute them through, through the property that those have been reviewed by the, by the irrigation companies, but, you know, the final plans will be, will be subject to, to final review, but at this stage, you know, they've, they've been properly noticed and acknowledged, acknowledged that. A little bit on transportation. So the proposed street cross-sections within this plan, within the preliminary plat, they, they do make the transportation master plan, there are some modifications to accommodate a foot wide pathway. There's, there's a, within the trails master plan, it does show a trail that connects from kind of the canal alignment and split off in one direction towards 660 West and the other direction toward 800 West. And they, they're proposing to provide that along, along the street as, as, you know, a street side sidewalk, which, you know, we've, we've approved in various other subdivisions as, as a way to provide for the planned, planned trail there. So that, you know, as far as, as far as staff's interpretation, they are meeting that provision in the city code providing these trails. They, they are proposing extending a road to the north to 660 West by a 50 foot wide, you know, city owned parcel. It was dedicated on the plat as, as a future extension of, of that existing street. It, it's currently a cul-de-sac, it's been that way for a long time. I believe the subdivision was dedicated originally in 1981, so over 40 years it's been that way, but there is this parcel at the end that's, you know, we, we talked to our attorney about it, and it's very, it, it's quite clear that that's, that's intended for a future extension of that roadway. And, and that's, and that's what they're proposing to connect to. Just a little bit more background on that. We, we did receive, you know, through the review process to the concept plan, we did receive a few other, I guess, layouts of, of the development of, of the streets. And one thing that came up, you know, and this was during, during the concept plan, actually before it came to preliminary plat, one thing that came up or was proposed was to do a cul-de-sac and just end it at the end, you know, toward the end of the lot there. The issue with that proposal was that it didn't meet the city's connectivity standards, so there's, there's a, a pretty clear standard that states that a cul-de-sac can't be longer than 660 feet. And then also, this is both a prior code issue as well as, you know, Nibley City Code does, does state this as well separately, but it's, it's not allowed to have more than 30 lots from one access point. So, you know, that, that's part of the reason to explore that connection. There's not necessarily a master plan road. If you look at our master plan, it doesn't show a road going through there. However, it is intended, it was, you know, originally intended for that connection. We have other connections like this and other subdivisions throughout the community. We, we recently, you know, when, when Ridge Land Park was a recent, recently approved, we actually dedicated a similar parcel for, for property as well as in the Mount Vista subdivision. So, you know, that's, it has been kind of standard practice to do so. The, as far as street trees go, the preliminary landscape plan is, is a, showed it, it does, it does show the required street trees, the required foot intervals, you know, they, they will be required to do a final landscape plan, street tree plan, but, but, you know, as they're showing, appears, appears to meet city standards and reviewed by the city arborist. So staff's recommendation is approval of Nibley Coach subdivision preliminary plat with staff's recommended findings, conditions, and I'll, I'll read through what those are. So recommended findings. And again, I've, I've mentioned this a little bit in the last meeting, but this is something we'd like to do going forward. We haven't always been good about adopting findings, but, but these give, you know, the reasons for the decision and kind of the justification. So, and then the conditions are, you know, what needs to happen before, before it comes finalized. But, so on, on May 12th, 2022, the property was rezoned from industrial to commercial in conjunction with concurrent process of subdivision in accordance with Nibley City Code. The proposed uses of assisted living facility and single family home are listed as conditional uses within a commercial zone at the time of initial application, they are subject to further review of a conditional use permit. Number three is proposed lots, including proposed setbacks, lot sizes and frontages are in accordance with Nibley City Code 19.22. Number four, proposed streets and trails are in accordance with Nibley City Code 21.12 and transportation master plan and traffic master plan. Proposed water, sewer and stormwater systems have been reviewed by the city engineer and public works and are subject to further review at time of funding and design. Number six, the canal system are subject to approval by college irrigation and Nibley Black Smith Fork irrigation. Numbers seven, the proposed phase in plan in accordance with Nibley City Code 21.02.080. And then the recommended conditions of approval are the final approval is subject, division is subject to my plat approval. Instruction of proposed single family homes and assisted living center is subject to conditional use permit approval. Proposed assisted living center is subject to site plan approval, and all buildings and elements laid on the preliminary plat are subject to further review. Two, any buildings adjacent to a residential zone or residential dwelling unit must provide an increased setback in accordance with Nibley City Code 19.2202, such as section 11, the date C30 feet in height. Number three, prior to final plat and site plan approval, the applicant will need to demonstrate sufficient fire flow for subdivision. For development agreement will need to be approved prior to recordation of final plat. Number five, drive access shall be at least 100 feet away from the center intersection block, block one and assisted living center. Number six, geotechnical report and pavement design for the new public roads required at the time of final plat. That's. Sit on the background.
All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing at this time for the Nibley Coach subdivision preliminary plat. And we have a few emails that received by Levi, and, and he shared that with the rest of us, so we'll have him read that first email.
Not so you can hear my voice. I'll read this out. This is from, I read the giant log at 27, 2750 South, 660 West. I'm writing this letter in regards to public hearing. Newly coached subdivision preliminary plat of 32 lot subdivision, 31, single family residential lots and one lot for an assisted living center containing 9.7 acres located approximately 2850 South, 800 West. I am a homeowner on 660 West, 2750 South, less than a block from the designated driveway subdivision. I realize that growth is inevitable in Cache County, as it is a superb place to live and raise a family. I'm hoping that a different access to the subdivision will be found on 660 West. It's a cul-de-sac where children play in the street all year long with little traffic and is a safe area for them. 660 West is the cross street to Nibley Elementary School, and should the designated easement become a roadway, it would cause a horrific traffic tie-up in the morning and afternoon in the school. It would become a danger to the families living on 660 West and prevent children from playing in their usual playground, which is the cul-de-sac. How is this going to affect the Taylor and Timmons families, whose property would be definitely affected going right through them? Are they happy about this? The opposite side of the subdivision seems like a much better place to be ingress or ingress on 3200 South, as, as it is away from a grade school and would be a safer place on 800 West and two places. In addition, if subdivision is approved, there would, there would be a need for a traffic signal for safety as the whole area has grown exponentially. There are some, there are, these are some of my concerns. Another concern is the water and sewage, are some of the wells in Nibley area have been affected by the huge growth. Will more wells be adversely affected? Will there be enough water supply from the streams? Or does it have a development? And there is so many other health developments that are being processed until the community can learn. These are my concerns, which I am sharing, very much the planning commission did such a good job in our community. And then she adds in a, in a later email, I feel unnecessary to add a few more comments to my former letter to the Nibley Planning Commission concerning the Nibley Coach preliminary hearing tonight at 6:30 PM pertaining to 660 West and surrounding neighbors. There are no sidewalks in this neighborhood, which would be a huge concern for safety for walkers and bikings in this neighborhood. How would that affect those of us living on 660 West and the How would that affect those of us living on six sixty west and side streets off from it? Applying for an additional thirty-one single homes and assisted living center in the Nibley Coach plat with opening up a cul-de-sac for ingress or egress. The addition of the new homes and assisted living center will be a real concern for safety for the neighborhood families. The sidewalks were to be put in, who pays for that? However, property taxes be affected as well as the sewer and water lanes. Most sincere to Janet Long.
Okay, um, is there any others?
That's it for this one.
Okay, um. We'll go through the, the rules here. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Comments will be taken in order as they appear on the sign-in sheet. Commenters will identify themselves by name and address. It will be included in the records. Any personal attacks or comments determined by the. Presiding officer to be violation of the council meeting rules shall be ruled out of order. Um, all written con, all written. Um, comments will be accepted. It'll be included in the records as part of the meeting minutes. So, um, if you receive that, you should be there. Um, even in the conclusion of this meeting. Um, let's go ahead with Padra Anderson. You're the first name on our list.
You've heard me very, very many times. I've been to several of these meetings. I accept that times change and that growth is inevitable. However, repeating what I have voiced in similar meetings, I'm saddened. That a nice quiet town I have lived in for over fifty years has grown into a busy, noisy, somewhat dangerous city. I do not have the knowledge, expertise, influence or money to try and stop this proposal. So with reluctance and sadness, if this does happen, I'll accept more change for this once rural atmosphere. I do have, had a couple of concerns. Number one, what is to be done about the increase in traffic with this change? Instruction of a new school and now this housing proposal, traffic will be greatly compounded on this already. Busy, narrow road and I do live on eight hundred west. I've got to say that, sorry. Are there any provisions to include widening the road and add curb and gutter in front of mine and my neighbor's homes? As was promised years ago, but then withdrawn. In my opinion, safety, comfort, assurance of necessary improvements. That will benefit us as current citizens should be considered as a top priority. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Um, Laura Shank.
I am not opposed to anyone building on their own property. I come from a family of contractors. If you own the land, you should be able to build anything you would like to. What I am opposed to is your desire to build on your property infringes on the safety of children and just for a profit. There is a plan to build an assisted living facility and thirty-one homes. Is this, I want to know, is this a different project than what was proposed two years ago? Cause two years ago it was an assisted living community, not family homes. Um, is this a completely different plan development? Um, what I don't support, what I don't support is the fact that the developer wants to destroy my cul-de-sac. By building an access road through my neighborhood into his private facility. I do not support endangering children so that people can make money. When we bought an existing house in our neighborhood thirty-eight years ago, most of the houses already existed. When we looked at the master plan and we did, there was no road proposed. That was thirty-eight years ago. Now some necessary changes have to take place. We did not sign on this school being built, but we knew it had to happen. So when a nonprofit school was built, we didn't have any issues. Now the school brought its own set of changes. Mostly being very, very increased traffic flow around our neighborhood. With thirty-one family homes, this road will become a congested parking lot. Since we are a block away from this school. Nibley Elementary is one of the most crowded schools in Cache County School District, according to a report necessitating a bond to build onto Nibley Elementary. Nibley Elementary School is a non-bussing school. Three special ed buses transport special education students from preschool to sixth grade. Nibley Elementary has a safe walking route for students walking to and from school. That safe route is along six, six to west. With the proposed housing developments that are getting approved, Nibley Elementary will gain more students that will be walking on the safe route. This will increase traffic, traffic along the Nibley City, around the Nibley Elementary Safe Route to School Plan. Nibley Elementary School is already over capacity, capacity and it is a no bussing school. This means the most students are dropped off and picked up by their parents. The students drive through the pickup zone and head west or east on twenty-six hundred south. Since there is such a backlog of traffic, the parents are now traveling along six sixty west. And turning west onto twenty-seven hundred south to eight hundred west. This happens at approximately eight forty-five, eleven forty and again at two fifty every single day. In addition, students walk along this path going to or returning from school. Now I'm not increasing that traffic and students by thirty-one homes. There are also special education buses that carry special education students to the school. Since there are life skills classes at this school also, these buses now travel along six sixty west past my house. This road needs to remain a closed road for children's safety. There is already a large amount of traffic along twenty-six hundred south and twenty-seven hundred south, six sixty west and eight hundred west for South Fashion Field School and Ridgeline High School students. A couple of weeks ago, I was watching the school kids come home from school as I always do.
You've met your time. Three minutes.
Your mayor letters speed.
This is my lovely wife. Thank you, Levi. Um, the next item, next individual on the list is Janet Long.
Janet Long, I live at twenty-seven fifty south, six sixty west. I'm a half a block from the cul-de-sac. And, um, I sent my comments in, but I don't know if anybody back there could hear them that were reds. But I, I, I wanted to repeat them because I couldn't hardly hear them. So, no. No, so, so. I'm a homeowner and then like I said, I'm less than a half, I'm half a block off of the cul-de-sac and I'm hoping that a different access. To the subdivision will be found. A six sixty west is a cul-de-sac where children play in the street all year long. And with little traffic at this cul-de-sac. Where the, um. She can slip, Laura, uh, Laura was commenting. She is right at the turn. And that's where all the traffic is right now. And so she sees that continually. Um, it would become a danger to all of the families living on six sixty west. And prevent the children who live here from playing in their usual play areas. How is this going to affect the Taylor and the Timmons families who live right at the cul-de-sac? Are they happy about it? The opposite side of the subdivision seems like a much better place to be in egress or egress on thirty-two hundred south. As it is away from grade school and would be a safer place. And for those on eight hundred west, I can understand their concern. So those are some of my concerns, along with the sewer and the water. How's that going to affect? The wells that are already in, and I didn't write it in here, but I have a daughter who has moved over to off on two fifty. Off of thirty-two hundred, their well has been gone dry. This hearing tonight is just, you know, it's, we're neighbors here. Commenting how this is going to affect our lives, our families, our homes. And, and everybody wants what's best for each other. There's, and nobody is here, I'm sure, but we does not want the very best for one another. So. Sidewalks would have to be put in. Who would pay for those? Who's going to take care of putting in the new mailboxes? Um, the safety concerns and a different access. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Joel Larkin.
My name's Joe Larkin and, uh, I raised my family here in Nibley. Um, and I, my wife and I live at seven oh seven west, twenty-six eighty south. So we are, um, just around the corner. And when we moved in, um, the, one of the big selling points of the neighborhood. That's like the traffic is very little. Lots of nice space. It's, it's just wonderful to live where we live. I, I've just enjoyed it a hundred percent. Um. I, it's my belief that, um, if this goes through, um, that traffic will increase, um. Obviously on, on the six sixty and then als- also on, uh, on our street as well, that twenty-six eighty down. Um. Yeah, I'm, I'm opposed to this, but I feel like if, if it does go through, what can we do to kind of limit? The amount of traffic, you know, could there be some options to, to take them another direction, uh, more so, um, I, I believe that. That, you know, the fifty-five and older community can be, can be a pretty quiet community. Um, I've appreciated some of the one, other ones that are in the neighborhood. Um, but I don't, uh, the assisted living center adds a little bit new dynamic. You know, there's going to be a little, there's going to be employees at the assisted living center. Um, and there's going to be, you know, some larger vehicles coming in and out of there possibly. Uh, so, you know. That's, that's just a little bit more of a concern with the assisted living coming in. I think that that will add, that that will increase traffic by quite a bit. So. Anyway. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Matt Timmons.
Yeah, Timmons, twenty-seven eighty-eight south, six six west. I am on. The northeast side of first lot. Uh, that road will be right in front of my house. I don't know if anybody's ever been down that cul-de-sac, but I've got very little space. From the corner of my house to the road. My house sits at an angle. With the, with the cul-de-sac, just as the tailor does, just shakes things. There's, there's, you can draw lines on a map, anybody can, make it look like it's going to fit. And then all actuality, unless you drive down that road, take a look. Get out, walk around, park some cars on where the supposed road would be. It's not going to work. It's going to endanger everybody. You got cars lining up on both sides of the street, down at the corner of the stop sign by twenty-six hundred south. Kids are walking home from school, having a walk between the cars on the road, dogging cars, all that crap. Um, the, the previous plan from twenty twenty-two, they had an awesome plan, which did for the cul-de-sac right there. And it, it was wonderful. They were having like in and out, shaped pattern. Uh, that was, it was wonderful. Logan Coach wants to expand that road to the south under the property walk and just make a little. Extra egress out and hit it down to eight hundred west to main thoroughfare, have it in and out. To the fifty-five plus community homeowners, I'm assuming it's going to be in an H O A, is it an H O A? Nobody knows. Um, I'm sure that the, if they're fifty-five plus community, they'll just appreciate all that traffic running past their quiet little area. Got the assisted living center there. Bill Graham will walk us out there, possibly taking a right front bumper to the hip. It's a bad idea. Drop that road off at six sixty west, leave it alone. Nibley City Commission Statement says, we're going to provide a safe area. If you put a road through there, redo the mission statement, get word, get rid of the word safe because Nibley City will no longer be safe in that area. I have nothing else to say.
Okay, thank you. Nate Taylor.
Hello, my name's Nate Taylor. Uh, these blueprints are a little old, so still has Ken's name on there, but, uh, my wife and I. Moved into this community, this, uh, neighborhood, uh, less than a year ago. And, uh, we were pretty excited about, you know, a cul-de-sac, being able to. Have this kind of lifestyle and this kind of, uh, environment for our children. Um. We are coming from Las Vegas, so we are quite familiar with the, uh, tight living quarters and, and. Tight living areas and, and I'm, to tell you the truth, I'm all for a fifty-five plus community being there. I have no problem with it. It's just going back to whatever everyone, uh, already said today. It's just the safety. I have a five-year-old, this two-year-old and. One on the way and, uh. We. We were quite saddened when we heard about these plans and again, you know, that's. Things need to be done and things need to go and then progress through, uh, Nibley. Um, and I'm again all for that. It's just, this is literally cutting into, uh, our front yard and our backyard. So something that I would ask, uh, is just, uh, sir. I would love to have a surveyor or something show me exactly what cities, why, why it's about to be used. My next question is just, what's? I know that there's going to be a trail behind my backyard. That's going to be probably with my backyard. Is there going to be a fence in between? I don't know. Is there, it's just going back to the safety and going back to my kids? The pens mine, our kids play every day together, for the most part. With this proposal, they'll have to cross six sixty, which is terrifying to me. So. Uh, that's one of my biggest concerns, just the kid safety. The traffic is the traffic. If the road's there, the road, the, there's going to be an, uh, influx of people going in, going back and, and I get all that. I get the logic behind it. It's just not what we set up more when we buckle in. And, uh, I apologize for being emotional. That's just where I'm coming from, you know, at my time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to make a comment? Come ahead, Andy.
Well, it's twenty-seven eighty-eight south and six sixty west. With a cul-de-sac. The road that wants to be approved is going to go right through my living room, front yard. I don't know what I'm talking about. I don't want this garbage. You can put whatever you want. Where these people live, how far? Don't care about space. There's not enough room. Do you live in a cul-de-sac?
I do. I do not. It's not a world.
You know how terrifying it is to know? I'm going to go there. Have all these people cross the border. And to not know who's going to be in my. The walking path. Our community is amazing. Our neighbors are family. I wanna keep my family safe. Who's not safe? Not safe at all. My babies, the parents' babies, the weeks. All of our kids play together. This cannot happen.
Thank you. Andy?
Hey guys. My name is Kevin Nola. I live on, uh, twenty six eighty four, six sixty west. And, uh, I just wanna clarify a couple of things that we, like, spoke about. So you said that if there was under thirty lots, then there didn't need to be a through road. I find that fascinating that this is thirty-one. And also, I mean, if, if six sixty west, there's only twenty-six feet of asphalt. Means that you can fit one car on one side, one car on the other, and one in the middle with a few feet between the cars. There's no way you could buy four cars down that road. You bought them two drivers. It's just too narrow. You wind up hitting each other. So I'm not sure why we're even entertaining this site, but whatever. And I also wanna verify, if this is owned commercial, but yet we're putting houses in there? Does that mean I can put a business on my residential property? That how that works? I don't know. I mean, and also, the, the the previous proposal was fifty-five and up living center. I didn't read that. I read that as, this is residential. So can you guys clarify that? This is either fifty-five and up or all residential? Which one is it? Well, it can't be both. Either it's fifty-five and over or it's family housing, whatever. We, we can discuss that more.
We'll, we'll clarify that.
We'll address all the questions.
Okay. And then if we really need these other egress, it would seem to me that it would make a lot more sense than not to stop so many people. If we looked at coming out on the other side of the property next to the farm, if we really have to come out on the, what is it, seven hundred? Twenty-eight hundred? Can we come out, you know, where the farm is? We buy that property, we do some trade-in. I mean, that way you're not coming right into a street and you're closer to eight hundred. I mean, there's several ways to look at this. So if we go right, right, uh, with a lot of people, maybe we could should probably entertain a few more ideas. That's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else would like to make a comment? Go ahead, Bishop Colton?
My name is Michael Colton. I live at seven forty-four west, twenty-six eighty south. Which is a little farther away from this. Smell a skunk in the woodbine. Something about this just doesn't seem right to me. I don't know. I do have a few questions. The Timmons and the Taylors, are they going to be compensated for the loss of property? Or are you actually taking some of their property? I don't know. And will you compensate them fairly? Or will you appropriate that property by rights of eminent domain to get the way of whoever it was, is, that wants to build this road? Thirdly, you're talking about there being senior citizens in this center? I don't want to see more senior citizens driving down on a vacation so busily populated by young children. I don't want more people like me on that road. One less. Fourthly, I guess the last item, if I could. What about the inevitable deflation or devaluation of property values because of this congested and ill-planned, ill-thought-out if I were the owner or an engineer in the engineering firm that proposed this plan, I would be ashamed. I would hang my head and walk away from it and request that we find someone else, because I do not think all options have been examined and properly evaluated. Have you done necessary safety studies on what's gonna change here and how it will affect the people? Any safety evaluations? I'm not hearing yes.
Oh, no. We don't respond during the public comment. We'll respond afterwards.
I'd like to hear what has been planned. In this day and age, when we demand environmental evaluations on every time somebody sneezes, there should be a safety evaluation on this and also an evaluation on the loss of property, because you could evaluate a lot of properties, a lot of people quite significantly over the long term, if you don't think of a better way to handle this. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurent?
Hey, Ron Weeks, twenty seven sixty eight south, six six. Timmons right there, cul-de-sac. Have no problem with the growth in the fifty-five community going in. It's a nice, uh, thing. But what I do have to talk to you is your trail, the master plan has a trail going, dropping right off when you've been to the cul-de-sac. It's just drop off and just dump everybody right in to the end of six sixty west. With no infrastructure in place on six sixty west to handle all of that. Several comments have been made already to pay further those comments about the schools just being up the street and the kids walking down the street. The kids are walking in and out of all of that traffic to and from school. What about the existing residents on the ought to talk about? Yeah, we need code. We make sure that people coming in, we have sidewalks, we have curbing, we have everything that's needed for the new developments coming in. What about the existing people if we've been here a long time? Do we matter? Any longer discussions? It doesn't sound so in this particular proposal. If that has to go through, if that road has to go through, the plan to install sidewalks on six sixty west, safety studies have to go in hand in hand with this development. Not promising something like was, I'm interested in what's about to talk about, or I mean, dropping the ball. It needs to be a contingency or a part of the plan that it has to take place. Please take care of the new residents.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Twenty-six eighty south, seven hundred, oh, eight hundred. This thing on? But all I got to say is that you, you really need to go down that street, because the road is gonna be right on the Timmons corner of their house and the Taylors as well. It, it's not really big enough to accommodate, in my mind, a safe passage. So, with that, I'd like to turn the balance of my time back to Laurent.
Couple of weeks ago, I was watching the school kids come home from school. Um, a little girl was walking on six sixty west to her home. She was walking ra- on the right side of the street and at the corner of six sixty west and twenty-seven thirty south, she crossed over to go to her home. The string of cars transporting students home from school was coming alongside her. Because they had to stop at that intersection, as there is not an outlet going on six sixty west, the cars were going slow. The car suddenly stopped and the little girl stops across safely. I was extremely scared, watching from my window. What if the car had been going faster to get to the proposed six sixty west through road? Oh, well, I might have been calling nine-one-one to get an ambulance for her. South cash for those students travel along twenty-six hundred south and twenty-seven hundred south and six sixty west to meet the bus at twenty-seven hundred south and east west. Often they walk in the dark. As school starts at eight o'clock in the morning, I was fearing my children would be hit by a car as eight bus started to busy at that time and not to mention slick snowy roads that could contribute to a car sliding into a group of kids waiting for a bus. There is a huge amount of traffic and children, adults, parents and visitors from Elkhorn Park that is right on that street also. Soccer, baseball, Riverhawks football, lacrosse games and practices are held. These events occur six days a week, starting at four-thirty and you need an eight. There are no other, there are two other senior communities, centers living in two other senior living communities in Nibley. It's just shaped into a new. These roads are not connected to any community road. The community, uh, the communities are contained in itself. There are also two small parking lots to allow for extra guests. There are no other assisted living or senior living communities requiring a new road being built under the existing cul-de-sac. Not to mention that this was never on the master plan and it puts two houses that have been there for a long time out of compliance. And basically their front door will be the street. Please do not sell the safety of our children to a developer. In the end, the only winner will be the developer, developer and our children will be the losers.
Thank you. It's a lovely comment. Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll try to go through and answer these questions the best we can. I think Audra Anderson asked about widening eighth west and curb and gutter. And, and I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, and, and Tom, you, you can chime in if you want. There, there is, there is no eminent plan that to widen eight hundred west or or any specific improvements that this project will require improvements adjacent to eight hundred west in that half of the, on, on that side of the road, you know, adj- adjacent to the development as, as, you know, most developments do.
Okay.
They will need, they will be required, you know, put a curb gutter sidewalk on, and it's actually an eight-foot sidewalk on a portion of it to accommodate that planned trail. But, uh, the roadway width of eight hundred west on the master plan is actually quite narrow. It's, and, and I believe is it twenty-two feet of asphalt, so two, two eleven foot travel lanes?
Forty-sixty. Is it twenty? Eighty-sixty west, twenty-sixty.
Yeah, eighth west, eight hundred west is.
Is it two, two eleven foot travel lanes?
Yeah.
Even like that. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's what's in the master plan. That's kinda right here. Close here, you know, I mean.
And it's, and it's a collector road.
It's a collector, yes.
Okay, um, seems like safety is brought up by everybody. And, um, and I don't know how you answer that. Cars are cars and kids are kids and they are what they are. So, and I don't know if there's any plans to put a sidewalk on six sixty west?
Uh, there's specific plans to, to put sidewalk, you know, beyond the, the connection on this development. Uh, the, that could, you know, that could be something that the city consider. That would, that would be a council decision, a budget, budgetary decision to to, um, put a sidewalk there. But it's not proposed as part of this development, not to say that it couldn't be prioritized by the city as a, as a capital project.
So that's something that'd have to be approached to the city council.
Right.
Okay, to clarify that. Sewers? I think they're, sewers, go ahead, Tom, could you answer that?
Been taking copious notes. If you don't mind if I, I just go down through the line of the things that I planned and have in mind. The sewer, we looked at that early on and it's, and it's one of our primary cur- curial pipes. There's no capacity issues there. Um, we did do a water model. It was the second time it's done in this area. And something that wasn't really highlighted, it was mentioned but not really emphasized in Levi's report. It was found deficient in this area with regard to the, uh, the community center. They're required to have, for, for the information that was provided to me, we ran the water model. And, uh, the fire marshal said that they required three thousand two hundred fifty gallons per minute. When we ran that model, it came back available of two thousand six hundred forty-nine gallons per minute. So it's quite a bit deficient there. There are ways to, to address that. Typically, those would be through construction. So when, when the, let me back up just here on, on what fire flow is. So when, when you're building a building, each home has to have an available wire of fire flow, fifteen hundred gallons. It's not cumulative. It's just make, provide that. When you get into commercial and industrial areas, it's based on the height of the building, the use of the building. If it's high occupancy or assembly, like at a school or something, it's, it's a higher demand. Um, if it's an industrial or flammable and things, it's also a higher demand and it diminishes as, with fewer people, smaller buildings and such like that. So the information that was provided to me and the fire marshal running that water model was found deficient. So there are mitigation measures that are available. They can change the type of construction. They can lower the height. They can, they can make it smaller or fewer residents. So the way you do that is, uh, have brick or concrete exterior walls and fire protected corridors and firewalls to separate things. So it, it's just a higher level of construction. Sometimes it's non-combustible construction helps as well. So, um, if, what, as this, as this, uh, design progresses, that's gonna be the governing factor. We just can't move forward without either investing that or, uh, that goes, goes ahead. So I want, I wanted to make mention of that, just to, uh, inform the commission.
Would that, would that be the final plat on the?
That would be before, so that, that could be before final plat or conditional use permit. Depends on how this is gonna go. Um, Levi will have to provide a procedural, um, schedule for us, but, um, it, it could, it could happen in a conditional use permit application before they can build that building. I would, uh, if it were me, I would probably, as an owner, and, and I can't speak for this owner, but I would wanna resolve this before I record the final plat presentation, just so I, I'm not having increased size of water lines going in there or fire steps for fire strength, etc.
Right. I, I think, I think it's likely that the final plat and site plan will happen in, in the condition use that, that will happen kind of in tandem with one another, because I feel like they're connected, right, to building and the, the infrastructure that services the building and the subdivision are connected there.
So any questions on the water sewer?
I'm going. So, so essentially regardless of our decision tonight, if the water flow is deemed to be insufficient, that would prevent any permitting at a future date, correct?
That would prevent final reporting. Um, basically the way the, this, uh, regular decision would be drafted that the fire flow requirements would be met prior to.
Okay, okay. So ba- so that would have to be resolved and deemed to be adequate regardless of this is a yes or no tonight.
Any other questions on that? There, there's been a lot of question on the safety, traffic, etc. So I'll address safe routes of school, safety of children. I've met already this year with the principal of Golden Elementary Schools and, and each year the pres- the principals, they meet with us and we craft safe routes of school, um, based on hazard, stuff like that. So if this is deemed a hazard, I would request that any residents here go out to eight hundred west if six sixty west.
Hazard.
Vice versa. Eight hundred west would be a hazard. They would request that children travel through six sixty west. So this is a, it's a, it's a very collaborative effort. We have two great principals and, and they're very conscious of things. So they, they help draft these safe routes of school and they convey that to the parents and everyone in every neighborhood. So I, I'm I, I'm very confident that that will be addressed now or in the near future. Typically, these things are renewed every May-ish and it goes through the, the, uh, the principal, they communicate with the community members, uh, public works department, city engineer in this case. And then they have a, a resource officer, a representative of the police officer and a representation from school. It's had to be a pretty good process. Um, with regard to traffic, um, I've done a couple of, uh, traffic counts in there, probably two or three over the last year or a year and a half. Um, the latest one was done in October twenty twenty-three. Um, the numbers on eight hundred west came back this, um, thirteen hundred southbound trips per day on average. Uh, sixteen hundred northbound trips on average per day. Um, totally about twenty-nine hundred. It's A T average, uh, day trip.
Yeah.
Um, our collection within our master plans and our design standards, they're, they're based on a, a annual or an, excuse me, an average average trip between seven hundred fifty and four thousand A T. So there, there's still quite a bit of capacity left in eight hundred west in particular. Um, I've done rough numbers and if we could refine this, uh, based on F H W A, the Federal Highway Administration, trip guidelines and things, third gen single family dwellings, uh, with no age limitations, forty senior housing units. Um, there, there's, uh, trip generation models and numbers that are based to, to, to determine about what the traffic to expect. Single family dwelling, for example, is averaged nine point five seven trips a day. What that means is it's like a trip to work, a trip back. Uh, trip to the store, a trip back. So on average, a single family dwelling would, would have about nine point five seven trips per day. And then a, on, on same, senior housing, I approach that in a conservative way as an apartment complex. And those are generally around seven trips per day per unit. So grand total, everything, this, uh, on, on a very conservative though, this would be about five hundred eighty trips a day. That doesn't mean that six hundred cars are gonna come out at six A M. every morning. This would be spread out throughout the whole day. There may be, uh, typically there will be a, a peak hour or a fifteen minute increment within that peak hour. There may be a slight congestion in there just when midterms, for example, when the Logan coach, people get off work or get to work. There may be some congestion there, but, um, I don't feel that those numbers are gonna be significant or affect the level of service of eight hundred west. Below the level so to see nor below or put traffic above what are design standards in the end of that. I've got sewer, water, mailboxes. So I wasn't sure on mailbox comment, if the mailboxes were, were with regard to the new units or if they were with regard to new sidewalk and things going through the existing. Um, Levi talked on the, the latter of, of those two scenarios, but, um, new mailboxes are put in by the development. And then, uh, as Levi said, there's no real plans or budget right now to do any, uh, future sidewalk or anything through the existing tracks. Um, parking on the street and narrow roads, I want to talk a little bit about that. Parking on the street and with regard to traffic speeds and safety, it, it's kind of a dichotomy. What happens when you have parking on the street, people, it's called, I call it side friction. When you're driving down the road, and I've had this conversation with, uh, with one of the commissioners here, but what happens is people have to pay attention, tend to drive slower, they're more cautious. The, the other side of that is kids are running in and out and there is a risk of someone may run three, two cars. But in general, when your traffic speeds are gonna decline with this side friction, then you know. Eight hundred west being as narrow as it is on that south area is helpful. It, it truly is with regard to speeds, uh, speed of traveling public there. And you know, local roads inherently, the narrowness kind of keeps that, uh, traffic down. Not saying it always works because, you know, if there's no cars there, if it's wide open, uh, in general, people tend to drive as fast as they feel comfortable. So having that narrow road and the side friction, it's really helpful to keep that down. Um, speak a little bit on the trail. So there, there was a couple scenarios that came out. One of them showed the, the trail coming kind of in a, an upward quartile, quartile alignment and it just dead ended in a stormwater pond. That wasn't really a good idea. Um, staff actually requested that they make some connection with this trail. Either running along to eight hundred west and the, the proponent chose to run it out the cul-de-sac and then connect it. So there's some internal connectivity there. So with that, our city code, I can't remember what section it is. It does require a fence, that trail fence. So there will be a very.
Yeah.
Yeah, the neighborhood.
Is that, is that the cost of the developer or the city?
It's in our, it's under C.
Okay.
Uh, there was a question on loss of property compensation evaluation, existing properties. So, um, with this current alignment of that connection to the road from six sixty, there will be no property or, or property acquisition. It's all within the confines of what is plotted now and under the, the city's ownership and the intent of the, the, uh, connection there. Uh, evaluation property that, that's always a question. I don't know that the city can speak to that. Uh, safety evaluations, we're, we're limited by code on what we can require. And I'll talk about traffic impact studies because that's, that's always a, a question. The way our code is written is any subdivision that's twenty acres or more has to have a traffic impact study. I believe that is done at pre-plat. Uh, this is ten acres, so it would imply, the other one is, there's a reference in section nineteen twenty-eight F dot oh five oh for conditional use permit. With that says is that it, the development that requires a conditional use permit like the seniors in it would require cannot decrease or devalue the level of service on a road lower than level, level service C. So once that point comes along, that's when the traffic impact study could be requested and that evaluation would take place. And, and what that would look like would be they would, they would run numbers, check the level of service on, on eight hundred west and if it's impacted, they could mitigate that through a left-hand turn lane, a right-hand turn, deceleration lanes, things of that sort. So that, that's in the future. Um, it wasn't mentioned. I just wanted to kind of bring that up, but, uh, tie it into the safety evaluations. But, but by code, it's about the only one that we have in place. And then, uh, I, I kind of talked about this on the, the trail already. Th- this alignment was chosen just to provide some internal connectivity there and to meet our code for the, the cul-de-sac. It, it does say if we have a cul-de-sac, you have to have a trail coming out of it. And this was just the one, the, a couple of options that could happen. Uh, the other trail I've noticed is on the south side. Um, is it five hundred feet? If, if the, the road is over five hundred feet without another connecting road, you'll see another trail. That one, there was nowhere to really connect it to, so it just kind of.
And that, and, and I'll, I'll just add to that. The, the trail master plan does show a trail along that canal. Um, so it's all, it, it kind of does two things. It, it meets that connectivity standard where if you don't have a road that connects, if it's, if it's greater than six hundred sixty feet, you should have a trail. But it also, it, it showed it, you know, at, at the, along where the canal was. So it, it, it was also to meet the trail master plan.
Thanks, thanks for that.
Well, and the, the trail master. The trail master plan is supposed to connect to seven hundred west and also the Nibley Center eventually according to the master plan. But Logan coaches, if they don't give up shop, they'll be stalemate until then.
Right. Long-term plan, we'll, we'll see where it goes.
Tom, Tom, is there gonna be any, any, uh, infrastructure required by the city because of this?
Yeah, so there's gonna be some pipe in the canals that they're, uh, that's the environment and.
Wait, but, but paid by the city? Yes, any infrastructure that's gonna be required that the city pay for?
Is, is there a height limit on the, the assisted living building? I'm assuming it's a large building.
Well, well.
Is it one story?
The zone is forty feet. Um, but, but keep in mind at this time, uh, you're not considering the design of, of the building and height and.
Just the location.
Yeah, uh, they do have, they do show on the site plan and they have kind of a little note there that says this is just for a leisure purpose, something along that line. They, they are gonna come in with, with the plant, the building plans, the site plan, and that will be subject to further review. And at that point, you know, we verify the height, um, that it, that, that it doesn't exceed the height, but the height, uh, the maximum height in our commercial zones, forty feet, as well as in re- in residential zones.
So a question for Tom. On the, if this plan was to go through and there was that connection to six sixty west through the property owned by Nibley, does that road, is it required to be a standard size road? Or could there be traffic calming measures put in, like narrowing down to a single lane? Um, to force people to really slow down if there's oncoming traffic? Um, maybe a speed hump in that section, um, maybe a curvature of the road? Uh, any kind of, i- is, is that allowed or maybe even one way where it's only coming south? And not northbound, but still allowing for emergency vehicles? Is any of that allowed?
That's a great question. So what's driving the second access is the international fire code appendix that drives, uh, the thirty units, like single family units. And there's also another provision that, uh, if there's, you know, cumulative number, I can't remember what that number is for multi-family, um, in this case of here. I would say, and I'm speaking for the fire marshals, so don't quote me, don't get in trouble, but it would, at minimum, it would have to be a fire safe road with twenty-foot asphalt. Your question on traffic calming, I, and we'd have to talk with the proponents, opponents here if you have any questions regarding that. But I, I think in an effort to begin the project through committee, maybe be able to that. Other measures that I need to bring up, uh, we've, we've allowed in the past temporary access on Ridgeline Park, we kind of talked about that. Point nine hundred south, talking about putting a, the crash gate. We're also looking at the emergency access right now just to meet the international fire code requirements. Putting a crash gate for the connection on one sixty-five just across from that. I've, I've seen it before in another neigh- uh, neighboring city, well, just cut it off and, and then the emergency, the fire department could ram it. Or I need to say the M P.
So, so the road.
If I get, maybe if I get out a little bit to what Tom said, in addition to the fire code, there is, there is a provision in Nibley City Code that speaks to access roads, so roads that, um, is needed for development to, but beyond the boundaries of the development. Within that provision of the code, it says the minimum, the minimum width is twenty-two feet. Um, and, and although, you know, just to kind of tag on to what, what Tom said about, you know, there could be a crash gate to meet the fire code, I still think it doesn't meet Nibley City Code because that, that doesn't, that really doesn't allow for that. It just says, it says you need that, that second access. I mean, the way that I'm reading the code.
Yeah.
Um, so.
That, does it?
It needs the fire code. There may be a way around it to meet the fire code, but I feel like there's still an issue with Nibley City Code and how it's written.
An access road means two-way?
Uh, well, it says twenty-two feet of, it says twenty-two feet of width.
But like north and south would be required, uh, traffic lanes?
I don't know if it says that specifically, but I think if it's twenty-two feet, I mean, that's enough, that's enough space for both, yeah, for two-way.
No, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, and Levi, and this is the unfortunate thing about homeownership and doing the due diligence when you buy a property. This easement was on the plat in nineteen eighty-one when the original subdivision was built out. Like this has been part of the Nibley City Master Plan Road for twen- for forty-three years. It's on the recorded plat in nineteen eighty-one as an easement for a future road. Now, it does show in nineteen ninety-eight, the, the G I S does show in nineteen ninety-eight, it was deeded to Nibley City, but it's been there since the original plat was recorded forty-three years ago. So, like, like, we're not taking property, we're not widening the road, we're just, this, the, we're following the laws of ownership and land and so anyway, so my question's this, is like, just to reset, there, there is no eminent domain, there's no seizure of property. Basically, the residents adjacent to this property, they've been maintaining the property, but this is city property, correct?
You're, you're correct in that, yes. Um, there, there, with this, uh, road alignment, it, it won't require any property acquisition or encroaching.
Uh, one question I have, and I just kind of, I just used the measuring tool in the G I S, so it's, it's probably not completely accurate, but it looks like we've got twenty-nine feet of asphalt. It looks like the easement might be fifty-four feet wide.
It's fifty. I, I think it's fifty.
Fifty, yeah. I just drew the line, lines based on what was there. So my, no, no, I mean, this is on the, the, the six sixty west is what I'm looking at.
The connection to the cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
If they could zoom in there, you'll see there, there's some slight narrowing of the right of way and you'll notice that arch grid diminishes up through that north section there, but it was just an effort to stay within the, the actual property that Nibley City.
Okay, but there, there are currently no sidewalks anywhere on that street on six sixty, correct?
No.
And I know it wouldn't be a burden of the developer, but is that, I mean, just, just in interest of the kids and the school and the traffic, is that something that we need to consider to put a, a sidewalk there? And not on both sides, but maybe at least one side. Like, have we ever done anything like that in si- in situations like this? Because again, the, the easement's been there for forty-three years, but no one contemplated the road when they put the sidewalks in or said that.
That's a school project on thirty-two hundred south. It'll connect, uh, sidewalk through existing home, you know, through, through existing home frontages within the right of way. No encouragement in the right of way or, or property acquisition, but it'll connect the sidewalk where it currently ends at eight hundred west and go to where the Nibley Meadows subdivision is currently under construction right now. But we want, we went and got a grant through, uh, it's supposed to be a state grant, but it turned federal. So it really complicated things and it's been an escalating cost, but, uh.
You want to do another one?
Very small.
Yeah. So that it, it is possible that we could do the same sort of grant process on, on this one if needed?
It is. Every year, there's, there's a safe route to school grant that usually comes out. It's administered through U D O, but it's a federal, federal money. So, uh, there's applications to it. It's a long process, but, uh, yeah, we try to use that wherever we can.
And then, and I, I correct it in my assumption that because that is not on the developed parcel, that cannot be a responsibility of the developer, correct?
That'd be, uh, this proportion, this proportion of.
Yeah, that nasty thing.
But a, a sidewalk wouldn't actually go right into the tailor's driveway.
Well, it has to remain in our, it has to remain in the public easement.
Yeah, it wouldn't fit. It'd be, it'd be touching probably.
And that's the problem is flip a coin. Is the sidewalk gonna go on the east side of the street or west side of the street? But if, if the road's gonna go through and the ordinance permits a subdivision like this, the way we mitigate it is possibly through grants and safe school projects and yeah, I know the sidewalk on thirty-two hundred was a huge fight when Mayor Andrew did that twenty years ago. But, I don't know, just to some, um, some weeks to consider.
Big questions.
Oh, could you clarify the thirty knot threshold for exits again?
So it's an international fire code requirement, but Levi directed me also that, that there is a Nibley City Code that drives that requirement. The international fire code requires a second access. International fire code requires a second access for. Thirty, I can't remember if it's up to thirty, like thirty or more or more than thirty, single family clients, I have to. Get my codes look out, but, uh, it's it's an international fire code, it's an appendix. That's adopted by.
Okay, so just in theory, if if we didn't put this road through and we made a, uh, could you pull it back up, please, sir? So if there was a second cul-de-sac but shorter. That wouldn't be be required because that would, that would take the number of lots down, correct, correct? Instead of putting that road through, you put another cul-de-sac there.
So it's a no, so it might, might be, so let's just say there's twenty nine lots, that way it takes any question out. Um, and we'll remove the question about senior houses. Um, there's a possibility that you may be able to get by with one access. However, we do have city code that. Limits the length.
Right.
Yeah, six sixty feet, right?
And that wouldn't be anywhere near six six, six sixty.
Way over.
What?
Well, would that not just be one long?
I'm talking about the.
Yeah, yeah, but on. If we were to make away the access to six sixty. Would that not just be one long cul-de-sac? Yeah, in the context that you're describing, which breaks ordinance, because we have to, we have a minimum of six hundred, six sixty.
I guess the other question I have is, Tom, does does the assisted living center come into play for the fire code as well? Like, let's, let's say the assisted living center is there, that's treated a little differently than just a one residential lot, correct? As far as additional access.
And on the height and everything, there may be an aerial attack that's needed, so that has to require staging area. That's typically in three stories and more, um, but yeah, so and they'll want. They'll they'll want certain radius so they can access with trucks and have certain requirements for. Fire hydrant locations and fire department connections where they would take the hose from a fire hydrant connected to the actual sprinkler system. And run it directly there or through their pump. Pump the water in there, so the, yes, there, that that portion of of things will be addressed after the site and then given. But again, I think there's value in addressing a lot of these fire code funds. Prior to recording the final plat, just so we know what size fire line to put in. No final approvals can happen.
The the measurement of the six sixty, is that to the tip of? The cul-de-sac or like if this was to be rearranged and the. The assisted living was to go to the back of the property and they just went a straight cul-de-sac. And they had a parking lot in the back, does the six sixty just count to the road or? Past, like counting their parking lot or something like that?
You're asking some really good questions because now we're into a dead end road.
But that would, we we would only consider that if we saw a different site plan, correct? I mean.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, right now, we're we're judging the merit of, this is our job here, is essentially to review this plan and check. For that it abides by city code and ordinances.
Kind of hard to design it for this podium.
Yes.
That's a good point, yeah. I I all all we could say is that there was, and I I mentioned this, there was a concept plan proposed. That didn't connect to six sixty west and that in that concept plan in particular didn't meet city code. And we and we provided that comment, man, we didn't necessarily say, oh, you have to connect to this road, but we said it doesn't meet our standard.
Right.
And this is a. You know, an option to meet the code.
So we're, and I was just kind of reading through the code and there's a lot of stuff in there about parking. So it's likely we're a long ways from this being a final plat. Uh, like it says it has to have at least, every dwelling must have, I believe it said four off-street parking spots and stalls. Like none of that's been considered in the plat layout, things like that, right?
No, I mean, no, so, and yeah, the parking is two, I believe it's two off-street in addition to any.
Garage space.
Any garage space.
And then the, well, it says any use not specified is, so we got to sort out this, well, anyways, not getting the weeds of the details, but. Again, we're not considering any of those aspects of this, just whether or not this conforms to existing city code.
No, yeah, tho- those would be considered with a conditional use permit in the site plan, the parking. They, I know they are showing a conceptual park parking area and we did. Provide some comments on that, but the issue is we don't really have the final design and until we do. You know, the exact number of beds and square footage and everything, we 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 don't really have anything to base that on.
Okay. And you were talking about parking for the facility. The facility plus the lots, because I mean, there are small lots, they, and it, yeah, is very specific, must have the two off-street parking per lot. We'll see.
Can I take questions from? Hold on a second, Andy.
I mean, you close the public comment, but you can reopen it if you wanted to.
We can reopen it. I think Andy wants to make a comment. Come up here.
Come on up, Andy.
I just have a question about the building this property, is this is this gonna be private road or is this gonna be? Serviced by Nibley City, like snowplow, all that stuff.
I believe it's a public road.
It's public, yeah.
So it'd have to be snowplowed, which means snow would probably be thrown into the Taylor's driveway in the Timmons front step. Based on my observation.
There is a. With, as far as private roads go, the city has very limited application of private roads where you can build those. And in in a planned unit development, you can build them as drive access, but you still need. You still need a pu- either a public road or a public trail for the primary pedestrian access. This isn't a PED though. And so really, the only thing that can apply for a private road is if it's up, if it's for up to. Uh, three residential lots, and obviously this is more than that, so.
How does the the other fifty five plus communities in Nibley work with?
Those were approved under a different code at a different time, those those were. Those were planned unit developments, but under a different planned unit development code than what we have currently under, I mean. So I, it's, and I wasn't, I wasn't around when those were approved, but I know that. I I know that the, um, private road ordinance has been tightened since then.
Okay, because we.
There's really limited application.
Because we do have two in Nibley, one on two fifty west and tenth west, and they're private roads.
Yeah, and they were, and they were, they were approved through a different process, through planned unit development and old, the old planned unit development code. That was different than the one we have today. But we're just basing on what's, you know, what's on the books.
The answer, Andy asked about an HOA. I.
I don't know if the proponent can ask to.
Answer that question.
That, is there gonna be an HOA?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so.
So that would be lawn care and snow removal from sidewalks. Okay. Would that be open to the public? For the community, not community. Let's see, uh, are there other questions we answered, haven't been answered?
Sorry, there there's one question.
Is online as well, if you.
Oh.
There's one question that I think Andy asked, it's a good one, maybe you could clarify. Why we are allowing in this situation, single-family homes to be built in a commercial zone?
Right, yeah, I'll address that. So. The. Um, everything, everything in as far as zoning in cities is regulated by. By our land use charts and and the uses that are allowed on that chart. And so, yes, there's residential zones. There's there's zones that are labeled residential, there's zones that are labeled commercial, industrial. However, within those zones. They don't necessarily only allow commercial, residential, industrial. There is, there is a. A continuum of different uses that are allowed. When they, when they originally applied for this project and submitted their concept plan. Um, single-family home was listed as a conditional use within the commercial zone. So that's why it's, that's why it's allowed.
Thank you.
We have made some changes to that, but but ev- everything within the zone, you know, regardless of what we call, what the name of it is. Um, we we can call it, you know, whatever we want, um, we can call it a open space zone, but we allow, you know. Whatever use is on that chart is what regulates it.
Thank you. Welcome to our neighborhood, my, this is my neighborhood. And so, I have a great name. Do you need to add something to it, Joe?
You gotta come up to the podium.
Come to the mic, please.
Clarify, is is this a fifty five plus community or is it possible that it's not?
I understand it is a fifty five plus community.
I mean, that's what's noted on the preliminary plat, and within the notes, it it says fifty five plus community. The, there's nothing within the city code that says it has to be or it can't be, or it can't be. Uh, that's, you know, that's additional information that the applicants provided. But but that they've indicated that it's, that it's for fifty five plus community and, um. And they're they're single-family lots, meaning, you know, they're owned, owned, they'll be owned by the individual. Lot owners there.
And they'd be the ones, the developer would be the ones guideline, following that guideline fifty five plus.
Right, right, the city isn't, I mean, I don't, I don't think the city can say. You know, put some kind of restriction that says it must be fifty five and over or or it can't be fifty five and over. I, uh, I think that's out of the purview of 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 our code. The way that I read it, I mean, I I don't, I don't see any, anything that we could do. It's, I think it's just information provided, you know, for the context of. Of what they're planning to do.
And I just wanna highlight one thing, if you could zoom in to where the cul-de-sac is, this where it attaches to. If you can see how close the dwellings are to the easement and then the road, I think that's been highlighted already that with. You know, with pushing snow and whatever else, that's going right up against the dwelling. And that's, I have a concern about that, so, that's it.
My, my, my issue is, um, you can see I'm in a. A biased conflict right now. But my issue is, my, I have a good friend who built a house on thirty two hundred south. On eighth west and he built the house like over thirty eight years ago, and the master plan requires eighth west to go. Through his property if there's a development built behind his property, which hasn't happened in forty years. And they, the city made him move his house west. So it'd ha- have access to that eight hundred west. Property there for, because of the master plan of the road. The issue I'm trying to bring up is there is, there is an easement there. But not a road on the master plan. And and then. Um, Ross's came and built their house later, like twenty years, twenty plus years ago. And it seems like if there's gonna be a road, they could have forced them to move west to give, allow for the easement, but that wasn't done. And when Merk's built Timmons home. It seems like they should have been moved back because they're sitting on a lot of half an acre, so they're allowing easement. Or three quarters of an acre, almost three quarters acre, so it seems like Nibley City dropped the ball. Giving access for the road there. And I don't, that's none of your guys' fault here because you weren't here. I was living here when there's only two families living in all of Nibley, and so that's how long I've been here. And so that's. And so that's kind of my issue is, if it was on the master plan, I thought. When we originally bought our house, I thought there'd be a road connecting to seven hundred west on the other development, which is a cul-de-sac. And and since then, the last three years, there's a house been built at the end of that cul-de-sac because it was left open because the house. Were on the west side and the Easens were on the east side and there was open at the end, so it looked like there was gonna be a road there. But then they built a house there like three years ago and I thought, oh, they're not gonna build a road through there, so. And I don't know, and I don't know why there wasn't put on the master plans. I assumed that they thought. Weather Shield or Logan Coach would be there forever, but they, eventually they will probably close shop depending on how development goes down the road. That's some of my concerns there on there. So. I'm, I like, I like the fifty five plus community and I like the assisted living development for that property. Um, it seems like a good fit for Nibley. But I'm questioning in the road access and I don't know if there's a different plan for the final plot or not.
You know, I, I, the way I'm looking at this is, I mean, I remember it was over a year ago at some point. You know, we were arguing over a mobile home park. And at that point, everyone was saying, wow, I wish we could go back to the. Senior care facility and the the fifty five and older community. And here we are. And now we're we're arguing with this as well, like, like our responsibility in planning a zoning is we, we follow the code. Staff has reviewed the code, we have a public easement dedicated since nineteen eighty one for a road. Um, the road was never built, but it it is unfortunate. If someone's moved there and the houses are there. I, but 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 the easement has always been there. And we can't restrict and require, in my opinion, we can't restrict the road use. You can't tell a developer, he doesn't have rights. To a master plan road that's been there for that long. So we can, we can, we can mitigate. We can mitigate through the ordinance that's on the books, but ultimately we have to follow the ordinance on the books. If we don't, then we open the city up to exposure. Um, and and if we didn't have a road on six sixty west, then everyone on eight hundred west would say there's too much traffic on eight hundred west. You know, there's an HOA, maybe through the development agreement, we can work with the developer and and agree that, you know, I I have some property in Lehigh. And the fifty five and older community down there has a, has a a traffic arm that doesn't allow people to enter and exit from a park. Maybe we can. Mitigate a little bit of the traffic through a development plan, I don't know. But at ultimately, at the end of the day, we got ordinance on the books, we got a commercial zone which allows this. Um, and I don't see any way to prevent it without opening up the city to liability. Now, we can rework the code at a future date, just like we did about the mobile home park, we remove the conditional use of mobile homes. Um, but aside from managing the code and ensuring that the developer and the proponent follows that code, like, I don't, I don't see any way to. Not approve this. Regardless of the the unfortunate impacts, I do think we should mitigate it and look at. Public funding and grants to improve sidewalks and save school areas, but code is code and we have to follow the code. Uh, I'm sorry, but please don't make comments from the audience. If you want to make a comment, you can ask the commissioner and he can allow you to come to the podium. So.
Is there any other comments from the commission?
Sorry, what was the question?
Any comments from the commissioner?
I'm just, this is Karina online, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, Karina.
Yeah, so I've been listening to the concerns of the residents and the developer as well. I'm just wondering. And Tyler just mentioned the the grants and trying to mitigate things, just. If there's, there's ways to, those are ways to have a win-win situation, but I. Just thinking about a win-win for both the residents, because the residents sound really concerned about course, the traffic and. The impact. But I like the idea of the fifty five and up community. My aunt lives in one of those in North Logan and she loves living there. Um, after my uncle died, so I know those those are good communities. For people in that demographic group, but I'm just thinking about. Ways maybe the residents and the developer can work together for a win-win situation, it's just an idea.
You think, is there any other comments, Troy?
I guess kind of going back to the original plat in general, um, a couple other. Concerns or thoughts? The canals being piped in, are they being piped in right where they are? It seems, or, like, one of the homes has the canal going right under the home, and if, I don't know, if I was to like purchase that home, knowing that there's like a pipe under my house that could collapse at some point, and like-
A well.
Yeah.
Illegal well.
I, i- is there a way for those canals to be rerouted, like where the trails are, or something like that?
Yeah. You'll see the, the contour lines and kind of go diagonally across the road, that's a current alignment of both the canal. There's a canal, and then there's a ditch on the north of that. So if you look right at the corner where it starts on the bottom of the page, you'll see some piping that runs straight over-
Okay. Ah, I gotcha.
They do reroute it.
Okay. The only other thought I had was, um, from the trail perspective, when the south portion of that trail eventually gets connected, as a user of a trail, if I'm coming north, I understand we have a requirement for a path through the cul-de-sac, but logically, that it's not intuitive. As I'm coming off the trail, I'm like, where do I go? The trail just disappeared on me, and I'm not gonna think to go into a cul-de-sac down the road. If this is similar to whatever the final thing would look like, intuitively, I would think the trail would go straight across, uh, and then cut over, uh, which goes to that easement, um, also goes to, uh, Morgan Farm, which, whatever the future use of Morgan Farm, but it's, as being city property, I could see that as a destination on a, as a trail user. So just some other thoughts.
Yeah, you just struck a chord for a bunch of us, cause our current zoning requires every cul-de-sac has a trail through the back of it to make walkable neighborhoods, so that's required by Nibley City Code.
And that's fine.
Whether it's intuitive or not.
No, that's fine, but as, it doesn't have to be the primary trail is, is kind of what I'm just saying.
The, the trail that goes through the cul-de-sac actually isn't the primary trail. There's a roadside trail eight, along, um, 800 West, as well as the East West Street, and then northward 660 West. The one that goes through the cul-de-sac was, was-
This is a requirement.
And the trail master plan shows a connection really on the northwest side of this property, along 8th West, and then a connection up to 660 West, so.
The main sidewalks meet that requirement.
A straight line with the trails best, but, um, I think working, or working around a development, this is, this is, I guess, is a suitable solution. Or, you know, if it was open space, if it was, if it was somehow there was, there was, you know, more open space, and, and you could just have a diagonal line going through, I mean, for trail users, I think that's ideal, but I, I, you know, the, looking at the connections that are within the trail master plan, feel that, and, and the reasonable exactions that the city can impose on a development, uh, those, that, that seems like an appropriate compromise.
So is the Blacksmith Fork on the south corner running northeast and west, connecting to the College Board, or College Canal? I can see, oh, it goes up there.
Both of them, they're parallel.
Okay.
And they go-
I see it now.
Really from this point, and then up toward that point of the development.
Which feeds, which feeds Morgan Farm, eventually. Back behind Danielson's property, somehow.
I don't know, if, um, I don't speak to where these canals end up.
I've walked, I've walked them, so I shouldn't know.
One goes to the Morgan Farm, one serves as that, that house to the north, yeah, there's a-
It flows back through Nibley and-
The canal companies both wanted separate distinct alignments for their pipe. They didn't want any intermeagled. And, uh, so.
Okay, need to talk, we need to talk to Sid, huh? Okay, I, I, I think I understand, cause my dad was the water master years ago, and I've walked all these canals unfortunately with a shovel, so. Um, is a developer here, can we hear from, can we hear from you, please?
Okay, I have all the questions. It's not the, uh, ever was the protection to take that route. Hope it allows to do that, wait for that plan. We've worked with, um, for two and a half months before we brought it to here, so we've kind of looked at every outlet we could, and we just keep coming back to, into the city. As a developer, as the engineer, we designed it further. We tried to bring it in for that, same answer, wait, this wasn't for, oh, so that was rough, I'm sorry. However, when the city writes both the red code, the master appraise, uh, comments, Nibley City's been in some bold, bold decisions before that didn't turn out so well, so. Um, you gotta understand what he said, he's in the best interest of the city.
Any questions from commission?
So, a question I've got for you, you're gonna have an HOA, I, this is, this is gonna be a dedicated street to the city. Would you consider making this a private road and, and blocking off that gate?
Typically, when we develop these, it was always through a PUD, and we have private, private streets. Through North Logan, Logan City, Nibley, Fire.
Yeah, we don't have a PUD ordinance to do it, but if through, yeah. Yeah.
So as the developer, when we finish it, we turn it over to the agent. And then as the HOA ages out, whether it's five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, that's where the problem is.
Right.
Then without a PUD ordinance in the city, but you're bad that a lot of the cities have.
Another question on the HOA, y- you had mentioned that the HOA would cover like lawn maintenance. Does that include sidewalk snow removal?
Yes, it's for the benefit of the citizens, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's a trail along, running along the road also, or is that the sidewalk?
It's gotta be maintained.
I mean, that, that's giving up to their HOA. We don't, don't have any governance over that.
Yeah, there is a note on the preliminary plat that says that the trails within the development are maintained by, by the project, um, which I assume would be the project HOA.
Typically, we wanna be able for the community within the community to have into the pavilion. The 55 and older, it is as, as important for the assisted living center to have, they'll come out, they'll wheel them out, whether they're muller, wheelchair, to watch, sit at the pavilion, lots break the wall. That's why we kind of tie them together. The HOA will balance the percentages obviously.
Okay.
We do it higher, we don't have any piece of, uh, rid of the supermarket, we did that 55, all attached community with an assistant.
That's, that's actually a nice community.
I know that helps address the traffic. It's probably a third of that typically, uh, there's one.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you. Dick, do you have any?
No, I, um, I, we kind of just alluded to earlier about the role of this body essentially, right, is, overseeing code and ensuring that any development follows ordinances and, and code for all parties involved. And, and we've addressed all the questions, so.
Tyler?
Um, no, no further comments.
Brett? None. Karina?
I have no more for me, thank you.
Hey, is there a motion? I'm gonna abstain from voting, cause I have a conflict, a personal conflict, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve, um, Nibley City Coach subdivision preliminary plat, a 32 lot subdivision intended for 31 single-family resident, residential lots, and one lot for assisting the living center, containing 9.7 acres located approximately 2850 South, 800 West, with the recommended findings, recommended conditions outlined by city staff.
Okay, we have a motion by Brett. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Tyler. Any other discussions?
Maybe, maybe we should clarify, so Troy is, would be able to-
Allowed to vote. Not any other discussions? Okay, um, all in favor?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
So it's five to zero. It passes. All right, um, moving to item number three of Public Carrying Orance is 24 hyphen zero four, the rezone parcel of 03 hyphen 0017 hyphen 0019.
I think maybe we could give a short recess.
Oh yeah, we'll take a short recess at this moment. Need a bathroom break. To order from the recess. Oh, let's call the meeting back to order, please.
Are you ever in?
And if you're having conversations, you can step into the hall and continue.
Or do you have to turn off?
Hey, can we start again, everybody?
Can you check me? I see it.
Oh yeah?
Okay, we're starting the public hearing. We're, excuse us, can we start the public hearing again? Um, this is the public hearing ordinance is 24 hyphen zero four, the rezone parcel. Um, we'll go through that, and we have a public hearing, we'll open it this time. Oh, we have Levi introduce it to us. Thank you.
Yeah, um, and this is gonna look very similar, uh, to what we've seen a few months ago. Uh, there, there was a, uh, just a, a little bit of background, so this, this property is currently zone R2, it was recently rezoned from agricultural to R2. The, the applicant previously petitioned for rezoned to R2A, uh, but, but it was, that was mo- that was modified and, and, um, the city council approved a rezone as R2. But really, this is, this is somewhat of a, um, reconsideration of that, of that application, uh, but, but it is a new application, you know, so it should be considered as such. The, there's, I'll, I'll get the background of the property, and so it's, it, um, two, two parcels, they're about nineteen and a half acres, there's, there's currently one single-family home on the, on the property, and then, and then, you know, it's previously used equine facility, outbuilding stalls, there's a, there's a track and pasture there. The, the, you know, that last bullet- The, they, they already actually did the, uh, parcel boundary adjustment, actually. Let's, uh, don't pay too much attention to that, to that last bullet there. Um, I'll get into another justification that was, and, and the applicants here as well, by the way. Can give some, some more background, but this is, this is an overview of the property. Um, as you can see, you know, where, where it's at there, Jason, it's kind of in the center of the screen. You can see the, you know, the horse track there and that's, that's the property we're talking about. Um, just a little bit on the site context, the Maple Valley Estates subdivision, the west, it's an R two, uh, but it with a P U D overlay, again, you know, an old, you know, under the old P U B ordinance that, that was developed. And the lots within that subdivision, you know, are, are approximately the density of what you see in an R two A. Um, you know, or like an open space subdivision, quarter acre, half acre lots. Um, they, their R two A actually didn't exist at the time that, that subdivision was established. Uh, the Highway States Southwest, that's, that's R two, that's small cul-de-sac that's adjacent to it. A Stone Bridge is an R two A cluster subdivision. Um, Heritage Crossing, uh, to the east, that's, that's R two A, and then Maloo, up to northwest, that's industrial property there. Um, the access to the properties from thirty-two hundred south and twelve hundred west, there is, there's a master pine trail, storm water, water drainage, um, area empty one ditch of property. Now, like up in the area as well, so. Uh, this, this shows the zoning, um, as I just described, where, where the surrounding areas, you can see, you know, kind of a mix of R two and R two A primarily in the area. Um, with some agricultural, you know, across the street on twelve hundred west, that remaining open space there. Um, the future land use map does, does needs this pro- property as medium density residential. Uh, the general plan doesn't exactly specify what medium density residential is, uh, but it really encompasses, you know, anywhere from, from quarter acre lots to half acre lots. Kind of, kind of in that, that range is, is kind of how, how it's been in practice applied. Um, so really both the R two and the R two A zone fall within that designation. Um, it, it doesn't really decipher between the two of those. Uh, the, some, some of the land use goals to consider here, so encourage development, there respects and preserves the character of the city, provides a mix of commercial residential housing, some light industrial uses. Carefully planned for growth within the city, ensuring that development occurs in suitable locations and can be efficiently served up the long term. Land use goal two is to guide land use and growth decisions through application of the general plan, future land use map, relevant goals, principles and projects. Residential development housing goal one, ensure that new residential development is compatible with existing development, protect the rural character and natural resources. And then residential development housing goal two, preserve existing housing in neighborhoods where appropriate. So just, you know, just bring this back to the general plan, which is meant to be a guiding document for these decisions. Um, you know, those are high level and there's, you know, other things to consider, obviously, but that's, that's really the basis of, of staff's recommendation is, is, is that general plan guidance. So again, kind of looking at the same areas, you see it all from, o- other than Maloo, it's all shown is, with this medium density residential, um, designation. Um, a little bit more, and, and this did play into the decision of, you know, the R, the R two zone. It's, it's kind of a justification of why that was originally, you know, the, with previous application that the applicant, um, had, uh, why that, that came to be, but, um, just, uh, some, something else, keep in mind, this is within a T D R receiving overlay that allows for fifty percent additional density through the application in T D R. Um, so, you know, already within that overlay. And then, um, I, that's, I should rephrase that, the property, it, you know, if it, if it's rezoned, it, it, it remains eligible for open space subdivision. I mean, it, it's currently eligible for an open space subdivision, uh, but R two A zones and R two zones are, are treated the same for the purposes ordinance for, as part of lot size and density calculation. So there's no, there's no additional density for an open space subdivision, um, if it's rezoned to R two A. Uh, but for standard subdivision, there is, right? Because an R, R two is half acre lots, R two A is, uh, as small as twelve thousand square foot lots, but on average fourteen thousand square foot lots for the, the base, um, which, which is more, you know, close to a third of an acre on average. Um, I should say, staff recommendation, not planning commission recommendation, but staff recommendation is, is to recommend approval of, of this ordinance. Um, which, which would rezonate property, staff's findings are that it, the application for the general plan, future land use map, and the zoning is compatible and existing zoning, so, surrounding area. I do want to add, this is staff's recommendation, um, however, staff doesn't feel that denying it would necessarily be against the general plan. But when reviewing applications, um, and staff's interpretation is what's, what's the spectrum of, of what falls within the general plan? So this, this does fall within, within the guidance of the general plan, rezoning this to R two A. So that, that's, that's the ju- the primary justification as well as just the surrounding area and compatibility of the surrounding area. So.
Okay, um, we open up to John and Linda Wood. I don't, I don't know.
We do have, um.
Oh, a letter?
You have a letter, like, I guess it's your level, so if you want me to read it, I can, I can use.
I don't think my letter is really, um, worth reading. Uh, it, it's a personal thing. We bought the house eight years ago. And selling point on the house, biggest one was being able to see out past our backyard and have a view of the valley and view of the mountains. Uh, Gibbs Farm was there, being able to watch horses graze, have, you know, exercise of horses. It was a great selling point for the, for the, for us. Um, we recognize that Gibbs, you know, things change and they have to sell. And things go forward. Uh, right now, I think one of our biggest concerns is with the irrigation ditch that is at the north end of Gibbs property, south, just past my, uh, property line. There's an irrigation ditch that, uh, we've had a problem with in the past. Uh, it's open from the east to about the middle of our property and then it goes into a pipe. There's a big, somebody put a grate there, uh, with residents, uh, people that drive by or what, but there's a lot of trash that goes in that open irrigation ditch. Uh, lawn clippings, that type of thing. And the grate gets loaded up and, of course, it overflows and floods out our yard. The property that is considered being developed, it also, when they irrigate, creates a, a per size lake, if you will. So there, it's quite a high water table area. And that's one of my concerns for the development there. I don't know what the plans are for that. Um, we've dealt with Nibley City, we've dealt with Mordenzillas on this irri- irri- irrigation now. And, uh, they came back to us and said, well, walk up and tell all your neighbors not to dump the trash in the ditch. That's ridiculous. Nothing's really been, actually, N- Nibley City came over once and cleaned it out. Since then, it's been me. I've gone in, in there and painted a pitchfork and cleaned it out, so it'll, you know. So my question, I'm just trying to check the developer, I guess, whether there were plans to pipe that off, to keep this from flooding over. But I think we can deal with him on that. Uh, other than that, I'd like to say, this is the first planning commission I've been to meeting. And I'm very disappointed with the sound, the acoustics. And I don't know, it's my hearing, it's, it usually worked pretty well. And I have missed more than half of this meeting and not being able to understand, especially Levi, uh, for some reason. There's not the clarity there. Uh, some of you guys, uh, a little bit soft. But I'm, I'm pretty disappointed of, of coming here and finding what I find. Uh, also, it seems to me that every one of you guys are more interested in listening to a developer or planner than listening to the residents and what they say. It just, uh, seemed like I've already got my mind made up and I basically wasted my time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is it Danielle Mortensen?
I'm going to the paper, where I can kind of see dots, dots, right? So see the three classes on, uh, we're working on the Bible. So I also, yes, I have two. So I'm at fifteen oh nine west, thirty-two hundred south, and I bought fourteen oh five west, thirty-two hundred south. So the biggest thing I'm more really, really concerned about for my current home, I know how the water flows in the new home. Currently at fifteen oh nine, when we built it, it was flooding. It was like nineteen years ago when we flooded. So our home was built at ground level and we brought in forty-five truckloads of dirt. And my backyard, though most people don't know, has a concrete wall to give me a yard. And when all of the backyards in there flood, we flood at ground level. So if my basement floods, it's because we all have to pump up the parts out to the road, right? The neighbor behind us, it actually came up high enough, it really was a back. So when I speak of where I'm at at fourteen right now, and I used to take a walk, and I don't know if he's in the back of it, but there is a home on the west side that you guys are probably, I don't know, I'm aware of it. Can I walk over there and show you a house?
Hmm, sure.
This house right here will have two fire hoses and about six sub pumps running to get the water out of here.
Yep.
And I'm really very scared of waters if we make those retention ponds, that if we don't have a retention pond, we're not flooded. Um, when I know where I am now, in order to get the water out of our yard, we pump it out. So whatever we develop, whatever we improve, I get it, I travel all over the US for work, and this is definitely not that's the outcome.
Right.
But I'm just so worried off. Um, that part of the property next to me, it always has water where the horses are. And I just, in kind of going back, when I talked to Tyler at the expense of Lee, they put in the fence around the house. They only went a foot to put in that final fence and we have water. So that water too was high. I'm willing whatever. Just think of the water. And then it's, oh.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and then as we, and I know it's not even, but the house is still connected to all of the property power lines. So I'm also a little nervous when we start like digging, it might do something to my house. So I don't go up in there hardly to go, can't see me, like, to pay, disconnect me from the rest. So that eventually, like, it doesn't somehow, I don't know. I've had a couple of people come out, look, you know, they recommended dump blood from the house, but he said, but then you need to drain the entire power line to see if he can, my brother, doctor house. So I'm like, no, this is. But if somehow, because of the bar we gave them split up, they can figure out, let me just get the power and the water disconnected enough when we start. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Seeing there's none. Um, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this orance is twenty-four hyphen zero four. And we'll go to item number four, discussion considerations, so, and we'll try to answer your questions.
Can I add something too that I, that I failed to put on here? The, the applicant did, um, provide a concept line or a, or a subdivision, and that's, and that's in the packet. I didn't show it up on the screen, I'm happy to show that. Keep in mind, you know, as with other reasons, that there's no, this, this decision has no bearing on, on that, on approval of that concept plan. But just, it's really just for illustrative purposes, to show the area and what could potentially go there, if, you know, if this was approved, so. I, like I said, I can, I can pull that up, I'm happy to do that. I, I failed to put it in the presentation, but.
I assume they'll have to, they probably already got approval from the blacksmith or irrigation company for that ditch on that north side.
Uh, I, I don't know, I mean, we're, we're really not to that stage in the process.
Okay.
This is, but yeah, that what's being considered is to rezonate.
Rezone?
No, there's no actual development that's being considered, uh, with, with this, um.
Okay.
Just, just to rezone the property.
I understand. Um, I do understand the water table, used to be a lake there, we used to swim in it and float boats across it where that track is, so, as kids. So, but there's a new water level taking place by Tom on the depth of the homes and stuff like that to avoid flooding.
Yes, partnership with the planning commission and city council, uh, we have to go to school to help protect from their, over issues. Um, there's a layer build on the best parcels as well as the city G I S. Then this area is shown as, uh, less than four foot deep, so basements are prohibited in this case. And, and I just wanted to mention, uh, there's been a comment on the canal and stuff and, and the, the flooding that happens on the whole Sunset Circle. Uh, the city does have a plan, it's kind of conceptual at this point and with a high price tag. But, um, should create a conveyance for some of this, this, uh, ponding that, that happens there now. It's not part of this development or this rezonance being heard, but we are aware of it and, uh, we're, uh, mitigating that. Uh, there are some challenges with right of way. See it pinches up in that northwest corner there, it's kind of hard. But, and we've had conversations with, uh, catering properties, most are supported by.
Yeah, it looks like there's an access road to twelve hundred west up on that north corner. Eventually, according to what's in the lots in there, but that's, that's not our consideration, so. Um, any comments from the, the commission, Troy?
Um, so I'm kind of opposite of you, this, on this one, Claire, uh, this is my neighborhood. Um, so, um, to preface any, any questions or anything, um, I know this is like a, a new thing, but, uh, with city council just voting on this a few months ago, I don't know if, how much they'll be willing to change their mind, but with that said, um, a few thoughts on the rezone here. Um, I know this isn't, this is not even like a preliminary plat, but, um, in some just initial thoughts. Um, the, was it lot thirty-four? I- if there was something to be there, um, just, uh, ingress egress onto thirty-two hundred just seems not good. Um, having that go out to, um, that adjoining street. Um, uh, some other thoughts on my thing. Um,
Looks like it goes nowhere, doesn't it?
Lot thirty-four. Lot thirty-four. I, I'm guessing it, it'd have a driveway onto thirty-two hundred. Which, I don't know.
Yeah, that would, that would be, that would be allowed, if, if that were developed, just to clarify, driveways on thirty-two hundred south are not allowed. So it would, it would have to go on.
Just, just remember, we're only here to just consider the rezone, that's it, nothing more. So, it may not even be appropriate at this time to get into that any ready, the level we're, the discussion we're having now. So let's keep it on task, I would suggest, not to belabor your concerns. Yeah.
Nick, do you have any?
No, I, so this, so I don't know the history of the council, they, this was applied before and they denied the R two A?
They did rezone, but not according to the applicant's application, right? It was, it was, they, they rezoned it from agricultural to R two, rather than R two A. And that was, and that was also the recommendation of the plan.
Right, okay.
So it was, it was basically a modified approval, I guess, if you could.
And, and the applicant would prefer to stay at R two A versus going R two with an, with an open space subdivision, is that fair to say?
That's, yeah, yeah, they, they proposed R two A.
Okay, okay. And is that because you're, are you just selling lots and letting owners decide upon builders? Is that essentially the, the game plan? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. All I'm wanting is, okay to talk right now?
Sure.
Yeah, all we're wanting is something consistent with pretty much ninety-five percent of the surrounding developments. Nothing crazy, no, whole my family.
Right.
And I, I guess the first time around, I thought I was being very reasonable in what I was asking for. And when you look at the map, you're surrounded with the exception of Maple Valley, which didn't have R two A at the time, but they're the same size as the rest of our, of what lot sizes.
Yeah.
I was hoping to accomplish. And so it's, you know, it's literally three or four hundred homes that have the lots that would be the R two A zoning. And then a little six lot subdivision that's, that's right there in the corner is the only one that would be similar to what the, the zoning that they gave us. So that's, you know, just when, when I sat down with, with my partners and the team and looked at it, we just thought it doesn't seem fair and reasonable when literally everything else has received the R two A and that size zone.
Okay.
That's.
Yep, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions for the applicant at all, always up there?
Is it worthwhile to, like, stand back and really get a good look at all of the, like, I, I went at and, and like, looked at all of the other developments?
Stonebridge subdivision, correct?
Well, I mean.
Because the Stonebridge subdivision, that came with a lot of open space, not on the parcel that's adjacent to you, but in the overall development plan?
But I think it's still.
It's not relevant. The, the, the lot sizes around you, it's not relevant. Yeah.
No, I don't, I don't want, I don't even want small lots like Stonebridge, and I know that that's not relevant, I'm just saying the, the zoning type is consistent all around the, up and down the six lot parcel.
So, so why do you want to move from R two to R two A?
Because the R two A lot sizes are smaller and that can get a larger needed.
Okay.
And also, I would say, I just got done selling the Heritage Crossing subdivision, that little seventeen lot subdivision. And really, our goal with this is to make lots affordable specifically for first time home buyers. And for a half a lot, you know how it is now, like, because it's going to cost more for that and getting into a lot that's a half acre is going to be more difficult and settling slower and obviously make less money, so there is free buy.
Yeah, I, I mean, my opinion is still the same as was before. I'm happy with the R two subdivision or the open space subdivision, I don't see a need for a rezone, dub zone and increase density without providing the open space to community and, and providing that, you know, that, that benefit.
Brett?
There, there's no question that the R two and, and the R two A fit in the general plan. And so how I look at it is what's best for Nibbly City? That's how I base all my decisions on, what's best for the city? And R two gives, gives us the best chance for an open space subdivision, which gives us open space. And R two A really does not in a realistic way. So my thoughts, my, the basis for why I voted the way I did last time really haven't changed.
A question for you, Levi. Can, can there be like conditional clauses on a rezone? Like if we were to rezone to R two A that T D R be implemented in some way? So that the city does get open space somewhere, somewhere?
That's, that's a good question, it's probably one, right? So yes, there can be conditional rezones, however, the specific, you know, what, what you're specifically asking with requiring T D R. I think we'd have to ask the attorney that, because the, the issue with T D R is it's really meant to be a voluntary, private transaction. And, and I feel like if, if it's approved and kind of corners a property owner into requiring T D R, that could be an issue. But I, I think that we'd have to have a legal opinion on that.
It's a good question.
But yes, I mean, a conditional rezone that, the, the one, the application right before this, that, that was, that was a conditional rezone. It was, it was conditioned on subdividing, which I think is a reasonable condition. Requiring them to apply, you know, some T D R, I think that's a little, that's a little difficult, really, really meant to be a an option, right? That's kind of the whole, the whole idea of the T D R.
Thanks for your, I'm no expert on the T D R, but.
You're good to go, Tom.
The T D R won't be affected by zoning to R two A and I have R two. That's still an option on the table for either of those things. I don't know conditionally applying it, I don't know if that, if you can still look at that. I think that option is still on the table.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we should try getting to those, requiring, after requiring that they apply T D R credits.
Yeah, I mean, the, the developer wants smaller lots, reasonable. And from the past comments from planning commission and from city council, the goal was open space for the city. And so my thoughts were, how do we get both sides, right? How do we get, get the smaller lot sizes, but also get possibly open spaces for, for the city?
Karina, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, not right now, thank you.
Are there any other discussions for the commission?
Levi, you haven't, well, given the size of this parcel, what, if we did, if there was an open space subdivision created, how much open space, what are we talking about?
So this is a twenty acre, approximately twenty acre piece, I'm just doing a thing.
Yeah, just an approximate.
Let's, let's say sixteen of those acres of development, which is probably about raising sixteen, seventeen. An open space subdivision, you know, it depends, it depends on the threshold, it can be anywhere from twenty percent to forty percent. So somewhere in the range of, I don't know, the engineer is probably better than that, but, but probably somewhere between three acres and six acres, I think, on, on the high end of probably six acres.
So that's, so in my, in my mind, that's what we're giving up if we, if we rezone this as to a two A. We give, and I'm not saying they, they could still do the standard subdivision, R two subdivision, or excuse me, yeah, R two subdivision, but just leaving it where it is gives the best chance to, for an open space subdivision and setting aside some open space. And a better subdivision, in my view.
To kind of answer your question, so on the, on the T D R ordinance, so in an R two, an R two A subdivision, you can get up to fifty percent increase of your density if you buy those receiving credits. And so whether it's R two, R two A, that won't impact the interaction with the, with the T D R and any of that stuff. So they, they already have full rights to, I mean, you could do this in R two zone if you bought the T D R credits. With that, without a rezone.
I'm, I'm trying to understand why it was rezoned as R two versus R two A, is that open space?
No, the, the concept of that is, it was, it was agricultural at first.
Right.
And then the, the first kind of adjacent zone to that is R two. But really, the goal of the city, and, and we have a very well crafted open space subdivision. The goal of the city is if, if you don't want R two, then look at the open space subdivision. Versus do the R two A and have the increased density, but no, no.
Open space. Okay.
And, 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 I mean, they are, the open space subdivision, it's, it's statute, like, they can apply for that now and design a plat now. It doesn't require a zone, doesn't require anything. It required a zone change from agriculture to residential, some residential zone to be eligible for an open space subdivision.
Hey, any other discussions from the commission? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. In regards to discussion, can consideration of ordinance twenty-four dash four, rezone of parcels ending nineteen, twenty, located at fourteen oh five west, thirty-two hundred south from residential two to residential R two A. I recommend denying the request.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second from Brett, and a motion is from Tyler. Any continuing discussions or considerations? Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of the, of the motion by Tyler as stated? Show of hands. Karina? Karina?
Um, no.
No, what does that mean?
No, no is in you're not in favor or?
I, I'm not in favor.
Okay, looks like it passes four to one on this. Ordinance twenty-four hyphen zero four.
I think you better reconfirm what Karina meant by not in, not in favor, not in favor of the rezone or not in favor of the motion.
Oh, okay, good question. Karina, are you in favor of the rezone or not in favor of the rezone?
I'm in favor of the rezone.
Okay, so the, the motion to deny it, as stated by Tyler, is voted four to one, and it passes as a denial, a denying it. So stays at R two. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the final one, staff report, an action report, and Levi?
All right, yeah, just, just a couple of things to update you on the the city council considered the eighty unit ordinance changes, and they, they did approve them, but with one modification, and that, and that was in regards to the, the impact fees, well, it kind of touched with the impact fees as well as second, or connecting water and sewer. So, you might recall, the planning commission recommended to allow for a se- a second connection, water and sewer, that, that, that was retained, but what they did do is they, they said that the impact fee, if, if an additional connection is made, there would be a hundred percent impact fee of a multi-family dwelling. So that was kind of a compromise there. But other than that, that, it was, it was adopted as recommended. They did hold a first hearing on the project valor, but that, that's, that's going to be considered again at second hearing. Or the second reading, that is, not hearing. They, they did hold a public hearing, but, but they, they held, they held a first reading, they, they didn't make a decision, you know, final decision on that. And then the other rezone that was, that was brought forward, they, they actually, that was tabled by the applicant, so that's going to be considered at the next meeting. So I guess both of these will be considered, this one and, and that one.
The swamp.
From each other, so.
Property swamp.
Interesting, completely an interesting discussion there, I think. You know, there, we, we got, I guess, right now, as far as staff, the work, working staff, there's, there's a there's a couple of there, there's a lot of, you know, planning projects in the works, so that we, we're just kicking off the act of transportation plan. We're gonna have a kickoff meeting next week on that, and we're trying to wrap up our, our parks and recreation plans. I believe the stormwater master plan is also just kicked off, so there are a lot of master plans in the works that, that, you know, keeping us busy, and we've got, you know, some of you involved in, in those different, different projects. So, and, and with, you know, with the act, we, we suspect that as we wrap up both the parks plan and as we develop the act of transportation plan, we'll have some involvement, you know, a broader involvement from the, from the planning commission, but just let you know, those are going on. There's going to be some public involvement, opportunities for that act of transportation plan. They're going to be coming out within the next month, actually, for a survey and some other opportunities and engagement. And then, you know, we, we still have some pending applications we're reviewing. We're, we're currently reviewing Ridge Lane Park is seven through nine. And, you know, with, with these applications, final plat, if I remember, is, is going to be a staff staff approval, but just, just to let you know, those, those aren't moving forward now. Bridge Line Park has some issues, we're working out with the road, and that may require coming back to the, the planning commission to reconsider the, or, or an amendment to the development agreement for twenty-nine hundred south. There was a discussion at plant, uh, city council about that a few weeks ago. So that, that's something that's being worked on. We do have a, a concept plan application for twenty-six hundred south and highway eighty-nine area on, on, you know, portion of Wesley Nelson's barn property, the portion that was rezoned was commercial. So there, there is a concept, a commercial development that's currently being reviewed, and there, and there's some, you know, issues with roadway configuration that we're working out before we bring that forward to, to planning commission. There, our, our code does specify that any, any commercial development over ten thousand square feet, that the concept plan gets reviewed by the, by the planning commission, so that, that will come forward. And then the final approved, it'll, the final will come back to the planning commission, but the final approval will actually be a city council decision. That's, that's our codes, that's, and that, that's kind of the process we're looking forward to, but you know, it's going to be a, a, a different, different beast that we haven't dealt with a lot. It's, it's a larger scale commercial development. You know, I haven't seen, I don't know if anyone's seen it yet.
Kitty up, we're growing up.
Yeah, that's, that's in the works. I think that's, that's pretty much it as far as the update. If you have any questions.
Any questions, Nick?
Can I make a recommendation for city council? Regarding item, not exactly item four, but in relation to item four. Whatever the decision there. There's the Archibald property that is next door to that, you can see it on the, the plot. But uh, their house burnt down last summer. Um, and I believe at this point, I believe they're thinking to just sell the empty lot. Um, I think it would be great if the city looked at possibly purchasing at least a strip of that to fit our current standards for the cul-de-sacs, right? Having a trail out of there and then into whatever happens with the, the other property. So just a recommendation.
Okay. There is a master plan trail on the north side and they mentioned that of, of that, of the subdivision groups.
And the hard part with that is like, again, just going off of that plot, the trail goes nowhere right into kitty corn or, or three properties that butt up against each other where no trail would be able to go through anyway. And so it kind of just becomes pointless unless, like, at least that gives a, an outage of that trail to the other neighborhood. But just my thoughts looking at those.
I think that's why they're redoing the master plan for trails. Taylor, do you have anything? Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to report?
We work, um, that public hearing.
Levi, I've got a question and this probably, I'd like some input from you, Tom, as well. We talked a little bit about this earlier in the week. Um, can we, require might be too strong of a word, but anytime on a plat, uh, subdivision plat where we have an irrigation easement that conflicts with a residential lot, can we please put a note, a request that I know, um, be put on the plat to just reference Nibley fencing standards? Um, because the, of the inevitable conflict of irrigation companies and getting people the ability to uh build fence. I just noticed it on the first one. Obviously we have the, the irrigation easement that's going likely right through the commercial property. Thank goodness and no residential homes, right? Um, but just any, and, and obviously the, the irrigation situation is going to come up in the next one, depending on if they redesign that neighborhood plan, right on the backside, I'm assuming. And so I would just appreciate somewhere a notation on these plats, anytime we have a irrigation easement that we just say, see Nibley fencing standards. When we don't even have to say it's permitted or not, cause it can change in the future. But just like, it's in our best interest to better inform our prospective citizens or home buyers of all the things that happen when you buy property, just like we saw today. Um, that's a simple one that we could advise, come, uh, just a simple note. Does anyone disagree with that or, okay?
Sid is not the easiest person to work with either for Blackswith Fork Irrigation Company.
I mean, we just ran into it in our neighborhood and I'm just trying to apply what? Standards, uh, whatever. So, yeah, well, obviously, well, I guess I mean, not ordinance, excuse me, not a standard as term, design standard. Yeah, I misspoke, excuse me, but Nibley, uh, uh, fencing ordinance. And just keep it generic enough because things change over time, right? And so if we eventually get to the point where it's an agreement and it's fine, then it's, we didn't cause any issues, right? Um, but that's just something I would appreciate that we just start implementing if we can.
We'll take a look at that, uh, just on a site. Really not Nibley City's code.
It's, but it's their policy.
But it is.
Yes.
It's not working. It's not going to go as well, so I think whatever comes out of that, that agreement, we should make some modifications to the code as well.
Well, well, the way we've approached that code is if the canal company is okay with that.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah. We do, we, we do exercise some, some, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Discretion with regard to that. But anyway, we, I am working with Nibley Blackswith Fork Irrigation Company in creating a standard that will allow a fence.
Right.
Constructed a certain way.
Right.
But it, it.
Yeah, but in, I guess in the interim, it would just, would be nice to see something.
Yeah, it'd be done in the month.
Oh, good. So this is a short conversation then. Good.
What do we do? We're like, hey, we're working with them. I'm sure they'll share it with you.
Yeah.
We, we are making some.
Yeah. Is that going to essentially require like gates and everything anytime that?
Gates and.
Yeah.
Have the detail on how to do it.
Do they have to notify the homeowners? Now they don't, will they? Or they just keep going? Yeah.
They do what they want to do.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I even have to assume that's why the fencing thing was an issue before, cause they don't feel like they want to. Or they, yeah, I get it. So.
And they, they do get frustrated with the developer too.
So how that would work would be if one put a fence within that, they would approach the irrigation company, they make application, the irrigation company would provide them details. So if you comply with these details, we will allow you to do it. And then they enter into basically a development.
Yeah, okay. Awesome. And that can be retroactive, correct? For existing homeowner? Yeah. Yeah. Sorry, I don't want to go down this rabbit hole if we don't need to, but great. I'm glad that those discussions are progressing in a positive direction. That's good.
Nibley is full of canals.
I know.
Tom, do you have anything else to share with us?
I'll give you an update on the connectivity transportation map, transportation design standard base. I know so gracious looking for you to help out. Appreciate that. I'm still in preparation though and I'm still trying to finish up some of the details of it and create some maps, but uh, I don't know when, I'm hoping soon.
Let me know if you need help with maps. That's what I do. Yeah.
Hey, Tom, I don't, don't sit down yet, Tom. Looking at the, that property, the Riggs property, is that not Riggs? Gibbs? Is that in the FEMA flood map? Cause it does flood through the back of their property all the time.
Leave any of that out.
There's always been high water there.
I'll, I'll take a look at that. One thing that jumped out at me, I, that's the first time I've seen that exhibit off the concept. And I'm like, I just died out anyway, just because, just because the, uh, partial cul-de-sacs, those knuckles around those corners, they don't meet our standard. So there's a little bit of work to do on, so.
Yeah, it was.
Well, they have to get a rezon.
That, yeah, I mean, I think, I think we're just not really reviewing that. It was really just a shit for them to say, hey, this is my intent, what I want to do.
So, yeah, I, I didn't spend much time on anything.
Hey, anything else from the commission?
Just one recommendation that maybe the staff consider the possibility of eliminating R two A zones. So we don't have to deal with, with today.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's one possibility. Uh, another possibility that I thought about, and I don't know if it's worth a discussion, is uh revisiting the open space subdivision and coming up with standards that do make um, an open space subdivision advantageous in the R two A zone. That would require more density, right?
Mm-hmm.
But in some locations that might be, that, that, that might, that might be a good thing. Might be worth exploring.
Yes.
One of those two. Cause I do feel like it's odd to go through this.
Yeah.
Exercise where we have to, well, really all the nuances become a total click, you know, driving our decision. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter details, but one of those two options, I think.
If we're going to support that.
More or less density. Yeah.
If we're going to support that ordinance, the open space ordinance, we gotta, we gotta eliminate the competition.
The, the idea essentially being, um, you know, are half acre lots even sustainable anymore as a long range development idea anywhere in this cut, really. But then, so in order to uh have lots at a reasonable purchasing price, you, you would have to fall under the open space ordinance essentially.
You get some bonus for doing that.
Yeah.
So we almost, right, you made me remember, we almost did that in the last end of the plan. We almost did that in the last of eliminating. The only way you get that density is open space.
Yeah, because developers want that density.
Let's get further.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they can get to our density.
Yeah.
Well, and likely at a lesser expense because your, your frontage, I mean, you can consolidate the lots and the distances, but.
It was hard to get developers.
Um, sir, come to the, to the, state your name and your address, please. I'm joking.
Pretty good. We thought about exactly what you said in the last step. Getting ready for another zone plan, we potentially some other plans, so that might be a good time. You can get to R two A density in R two if you do an open space subdivision.
By design.
Yeah.
And.
You get open space.
Tyler, you ever say, for less money perhaps?
Consolidate your density.
Yeah.
It's a win-win in my view.
Yeah. And, and as somebody who lives in an open space subdivision and people around us, like it's a great thing.
Yeah.
It was hard to get developers on board with that. It really was. And.
Well, but when they do it right, it, it actually increases the value of the land overall, but.
Brett, I'll, I'll, I'll use that.
You go home now?
Yep.
We'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, guys. Thanks Levi. Taylor?
There's a motion from Brett.